I don't know, like we do set a microphone and like all of our, our stuff that we're used to. We'd like to call to order tonight the Regional Planning Commission meeting of Thursday, June thirteenth, twenty twenty four. Uh, we will call our meeting to order and begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Alright, first on our agenda is public comment. Uh, public comment is designated for discussion only. The public has the opportunity to address the Commission on any matter not appearing on this agenda. However, no action may be taken on a matter raised until the matter itself has been specifically included on the agenda as an item upon which action may be taken. Any public comment will be limited to three minutes per person. Do we have any public comment at this time?
Yes.
Would you like to come up and just state your name for the record?
Yeah, my name's Deborah Gay. I live out on Rose Creek Road. And uh, we're right now in the process of fighting the crossroads paper mill that's supposed to be coming up right next door to my house. Um, so what I wanted to bring to your attention is that, that property out there, all Rose Creek Road, I've been informed, well, kind of informed, that the whole road's supposed to be industrial uh, because it's called the industrial loop, but nowhere can I find where it is. Um, this company that's moving out there, they're in the process of trying to buy this property and it's zoned M three. It's a two hundred and thirty-four acre parcel that they're gonna try to do. An M three, I called and asked about the M three. M three has to be re-designated to in- industrial. My question is on M three, which I will be getting ahold of hopefully Betty and getting this uh, looked at. M three zoning is open grazing and, and it's really made for the ranchers, uh, for their, their way to work the property. It's not for industrial, light industrial or any kind of industrial. It has to be rezoned. But we started looking at some of the properties around Guanajuca, Humboldt County and Galcana. And there's a company out there, zoned M three. And it says light industrial on an M three zone. And I, I wanna know how that could have happened. That was done back in nineteen ninety-five, but it's still zoned M three. And it says right on it, light industrial. That shouldn't have happened in my, that scares me. Because that means that can they just flip this M three into light industrial just because they want to? I want somebody to look into this for me because that is to me is not a good idea, not a good thing. And for them to be able to use M three as light industrial when it has nothing to do with industrial, you got M one, M two. That's industrial. M three is not industrial. But yet in Galcana, that diamond company is under M three and it says light industrial. We looked it up on the map the other day. That scares me that we're doing something that we're not supposed to and I want, I would really, 'cause I don't want this company coming in. We're ag out there. Everybody out there is agriculture. We should not be allowing big corporations to come in and use up our, our stuff in the ag, under ag and M three. I, I'm, I just hope we, we all look into this before we allow a company like that size coming in and destroying our, our.
Everything. Thank you. Yeah, so those are good questions for Betty. Um, the board, this board hasn't seen anything from that company yet.
Oh, not yet, but you will.
Coming in front of us yet at this point. Is there anyone else in the public that would like to comment at this point? No? If not, okay, so we are going to move to, um, C on our agenda. This is the review, correction and approval of minutes from the April eleventh, twenty twenty four meeting, um, for discussion and possible action. Has everyone on the board had a chance to hear the minutes? Does anyone have any questions or anything that needs to be changed that you've noticed? No? Okay, so if not, I will, um, take a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll support the motion.
Okay, the motion has been motioned and seconded. Um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Okay, seeing none opposed, the motion passes to approve the minutes. Um, item D, request for postponement of agenda items. Have there been any, um, requests for postponement? Alright, so we're gonna move into the public hearing section of our meeting. Um, we will begin with item A. This is a, um, this is RX dash two four dash zero six, a zone change application um, submitted by Armenia Aradondo to change the zoning designation from R dash one dash six, single family residential, six thousand square foot minimum lot size, zoning designation to R dash two, multiple family residential zoning designation. The subject property is located at six forty-one West Sixth Street, Assessor's Parcel Number one five dash zero three, three, zero three eight eight dash one six for discussion and possible action. Is the applicant here for this item tonight? No? Okay. Um, any public comment related to this item? If not, we'll close the floor and bring this back to the board. Does anybody have any questions? So, seeing no questions related to this item, I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve, uh, staff.
This is a, sorry, Lindsay, but it's a recommendation.
Oh, okay. Or to.
To the city.
To the city, okay. Um, I'll make a motion to recommend approval of, uh, SAPAPORT RZ twenty four oh six, um, of the zone change application to rezonate property from R one dash six to R dash two to the City Council. Um, based on there's no evidence of the zone change would have any adverse effect on the public, I second it.
Okay, so the, and this has been moved and seconded. Um, we will go ahead and vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Okay, this has been approved, the motion passes. We will go ahead and move to item B. This is SP dash two four dash zero two, a site plan review application submitted by Michael Jensen with Jensen Homes Inc. to review a proposed manufacturer home sales business with display models in office. Subject property is located off Bourbon Circle, a forty-five thousand square foot portion of the Assessor's Parcel Number one six dash zero four nine one dash three four for discussion and possible action. Is the applicant here?
Yes.
Would you like to come up and sit up and, and state your name for the record?
Michael Jensen.
Okay, great. Would you like to tell us a little bit about your project?
Um, the project is for a manufactured home retail office in this way, um, on south, east end of Bourbon, southwest end of Bourbon Street, um, up against the sagebrush, the, the end of the, the street that ends in the last chunk of it. It's back behind Good Morning Furniture Store.
Oh, okay.
Off my side. Um, it's a zoned industrial property. And so this is a perfectly good use of industrial property, so, um, we've, yeah, been in business fifty-seven years. We've been doing business down here for fifty-seven years. Um, yeah, we have business licenses out here and whatever, so, you know, it's just kinda time to make a little bit more of a presence.
So you planning on, planning on putting homes out there, but, but settling and not having people living out there?
Right, right. It's just display only. There won't be any, in the actual homes themselves, there won't be any utilities. So walk through, yeah, if I like that one, I'll take it or I'll order one just like.
Gotcha.
Um, I see here that you have the three. Is that kinda, what's the amount?
That's kinda what we're thinking, four to start.
Just keep them on there?
Yeah.
Or you're not gonna half like wind up and make it?
Yeah, I, yeah, that's a lot of housing.
A lot of inventory.
That's a lot of inventory, so. Well, you know, four's a good number there, you know, to start with. And if things change, you know, we can always come back or something. That seems to be a workable number. I've got another lot with, you know, a dozen homes, so we've got plenty of inventory to meet demand quickly, you know, there, so.
So I guess I have a question on the parcel. So are you the owner of the parcel?
No, I'm not.
Okay, I just was wondering, kind of the, so you're, you're locating this on the back end of the parcel, which is actually kinda closest to the, the residential area and not, not the front end off of Grass Valley Road, so it's more, it's more back towards the residential area?
Yeah.
So what's happening with the rest of the par- what's your rationale for putting it all the way back to the back by the, by?
Quite honestly, because that was the parcel Millers offered to me, the owners of it.
Right.
Um, they, I don't think they have plans everywhere else and there's certainly no plans on the lower part. Um, they have, you know, Honeywell came out and moved a lot of dirt for.
Yeah.
So they, they moved a lot of dirt then?
Yeah, but there's no plans and I'm the only one that, you know, was in discussions with them as last I spoke to.
So you're just using a small portion of their parcel?
Exactly. So I, you know, there's, I think there's two parts of it. There's the lower part closer to Grass Valley and there's the upper part closer to Bourbon, right behind the Furniture Store. And then we'll be at the end of the upper part towards the sagebrush. Um, and there'll be two, I, you know, I think there's room for two more one acre spots kinda, you know, on the upper part between me and the Good Morning Furniture Store.
Any plans for lighting or signage or anything that's there?
Well, without knowing, you know, exactly where we're gonna be approved for it, um, you know, there would be no, no car dealership lights, the big, you know, things that stick out there. The only one, you know, emolument would be on the office, you know, porch light for security. And, you know, just to make it look like it's, you know, um, occupied and present or something, but no, nothing to, nothing to shine in the neighborhood or anything like that.
Do you guys have the security cameras and stuff that you utilize to, to protect yourselves?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's, you know, most things are now four hundred dollars a Costco for a dozen of them or whatever, so you stick them everywhere now, but, um, so, that would be.
And how many units you see?
Probably four, you know, an office and then three display models. The office will be, you know, is, is a display model, right? It's a natural unit that, um, you know, hopefully people would say, yeah, like this plan better than that one.
Gotcha.
And you'll have parking that's on the part, on the property and, you know, it doesn't look like you're, um, expecting, you know, a lot of traffic or anything to be generated?
I'd love for it to be, but yeah, it's, you know, there's gonna be one or two employees a day and there's gonna be, you know, one or two festivals a day, yeah. And that would be, you know, high volume, that's it.
Right.
And your office will be considered a display home too?
Yes.
So you'll be working out of an actual true home?
Yeah, yeah.
In actual home?
Hopefully, you know, change it out every so often as, you know, colors change and, you know, that takes a post.
Do you guys have tech, I mean, do they have to have that one set up with facilities and stuff on it?
Yes, there'll be power to that one, sewer water, sewer electricity to that one, yeah. And then, um, yeah, that'll be there. I don't, you know, at this point, I don't even envision installing any equipment or materials there, um.
You have no fines in town, do you?
No.
This is what, this will be the first one you put in?
The first retail location, yeah. We do a lot of work in town and we've got the business licenses. We have the dealer licenses and all that for years and years. And it's just the first time I've actually had the physical presence with the office.
Janet, buy a home.
I'll sell it for you.
Do, do we have anyone in the public that would like to address the applicant?
What kind of fencing were, will there be?
Would you like to come up please and then state your name for the record?
Yes, they should record us.
I was just wondering, when you were talking about security and everything, what kind of fencing will, will be for the, the part of the parcel you're on?
No fencing quite.
So no, see that, like, to me is like, well, what about security lighting and stuff like that? Because if you don't have fencing to keep people out, like at night, that would, that would do my concern.
Don't really have fencing.
Yeah, the one in town don't have.
I'm a pretty, I'm a pretty trusting person and.
But it's just, it's a residential area. That's what kinda makes me wonder about that.
Along that area though is so industrial with, because it'll be right by, I mean, I realize, yes, with circle or crown circle that there is, but right below it is industrial. And they have the church and stuff along that way too.
Well, I'm just wondering with having industrial right next to residential, to have something that would actually, you know, give the residents peace of mind and not something that would entice people to come in and hide behind, you know, empty homes at night, that type of thing, that if I were living there, I would want more security for that to kind of prevent that sort of thing from happening, having industrial so close to residential.
Right. Alright, thank you. Um, as a business owner, those are decisions that maybe you make for your business. Alright, have you guys had any of these, like, located in that, in that resident or closer residential and had any issues?
Um, our other office is banned at times. It's now the resident getting pushed farther away to develop, but not out. Um, yeah, you know, I mean, the houses are long there. They're secure. Um, there's not a lot of, you know, a lot of knowledge to go play in. There's no equipment, there's nothing too dangerous for kids type stuff. Um, you know, the, the once in a while somebody breaks in and steals a furnace, you know. The thousand dollar furnace is still cheaper than the hassle of the fence that, quite honestly, looks like.
Right, well, I, I mean, sometimes it only comes out, maybe one's still buying one, so. Would you like to come up and address the applicant and just give us your name for the record?
I'm Angel Brinkharter. I really don't have any question. I'm, I'm just curious of who the owner of the property is.
Miller Enterprises, I believe, is how it's.
Dead of the, the family.
Okay, that's all I was curious, it wasn't mentioned here.
I give it a second.
Okay, any other public comments, please?
I was gonna ask Betty, so specifically that zoned M one, correct?
It is zoned M one, but anything allowed in the city, zoning for general commercial is allowed in the M ones.
Are there any fencing requirements for M one? Okay, thank you.
Hey, state your name, I'll get your name.
Christina Anderson.
Thank you.
Okay, so, um, we'll bring this back to the board for any further discussion or questions for Betty on this item. If there aren't any, we'll go ahead and take a motion on this item.
We're gonna, Janet, do a, do a, buy my house, so.
I'm gonna let you go, Herb.
I'll make a motion, um, for SAPAPORT SP dash twenty four oh two, um, that we approve the site plan of your location. I'm saying that this is a profile of the property.
Alright, so the motion was moved and seconded. Um, we'll go ahead and take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Okay, seeing none, the motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we know when people ask us what's going on.
Thank you.
It's been gossip, right?
Something to tell them.
You know, kinda gossip.
And I wish I knew that, you know, that a good story on the rest of it. There is no story right now. Yeah, as of last I checked, so.
Alright, we'll go ahead and move on to item C. This is UH dash two four dash zero three, a conditional use permit application submitted by AL Brinkharter to allow a construction yard for storage slash rental. Subject property is located at fifty-two thirty Crowesdale Circle, Assessor Parcel Number one three dash zero one zero two dash zero eight for discussion and possible action. Um, I think the applicant's here, if you'd like to come up and, um, address the board, tell us about what your plans are.
My name's Angel Brinkharter. Uh, I own that parcel itself. It's gotta be for its fence, it's one, basically a little of a one acre parcel. It's gonna be used for, uh, storage with no real access to it as far as, don't be nobody coming and going, there'd be no employees there. We may use it for a bus parking lot, we may use it for storage. I may use it or I'll, I'll, or I may rent it out. I own the parcel across Crowesdale from it and I own the parcel across, uh, West Guanajuca Boulevard from it. And all of those are in this, did use the same way.
Is, is there a parcel, if I remember right, that's over there that's kinda being used for something similar? Or? Several, several of them, right?
Several, all along there are. And I own the other three that are being used for that effect.
And they're for your use or people renting?
I have those rented.
Those ones are rented.
The one I use is down the road from that, across from Swings Place, right next to Western Six Road.
And you haven't had any problems with people, you know, no breaking in, no, it's, it's been pretty secure stuff? Nobody's trying to?
We've not had any problem with that at all, but each one of them is chain link fenced.
Yes.
And, and locked, so there's, there's no open access to it.
You said it's not gonna be a lot of traffic going in and out of there?
No, just like the, if, if the buses are there, the buses might move in the morning or they might, and then come back in the afternoon and go back out at night. But there's no, there's nobody coming there to buy anything or do anything like that. There's no, no, there's no sales they play.
So if the bus, um, if that ends up going there, you'll have people parking their vehicles there or no?
They will park their vehicles there.
It doesn't sound like you have any real concrete plans yet, but you're just looking at some different ideas for the use of that parcel right now?
The plans come as the opportunities come on. I just have, I, I know what it's like to rent property there and what's needed. There's drilling companies, there's bus companies, there's construction companies, there's, uh, I shy away from anybody wanting to use it as storage, like to, to store buildings on or something like that. But, uh, those, the, the whole things are what I've described on it. And those are the opportunities that will present themselves at some point in time on this.
You haven't had any problems with your people that live around there with that being the case?
No, never. Each person that I, each place that I own there, I've already contacted all the people, got their opinions on it and told them what we were gonna do, uh, for this. But each of these parcels have been in existence in this application before I bought them. OK Tire used to be on this parcel for a lot of years, I believe it was OK Tire, wasn't it? And so those people, they actually bought the properties where they live, I think, after OK Tire. But nonetheless, they've been co- co-managing for all those years. We're gonna run, we won't have tires and stuff stacked there like, like was that in that application, 'cause I'm not, I'm gonna say, I'm not looking for places where people can store things in regards to tires or buildings or stuff like that. It's mine is all movable equipment or construction equipment or trucks or buses, what have you.
Any member of the public that has any questions for the applicant regarding this? Alright, seeing none, we'll bring this back to the board. Do we have any questions, further questions for the applicant or for Betty about this item?
I have a quick question. I don't know if we went over this one or not, but you don't find I'm putting any kind of lighting or anything up? 'Cause don't you, doesn't the backside of that butt ride up to a residential?
Yes.
Lot?
No.
And you've already, they don't have a problem with it?
Well, are you asking about the lighting?
Yeah, I mean, as far as like, you, you said you reached out to the neighbors and you said that they were, they were aware of what you were, and you got positive feedback?
Yes, I got positive feedback across the board. We never discussed lighting on it, but the fact being that if any lighting was there, it would be a light off the telephone pole and there's lighting across the roof from it. So that would be the only lighting that would bump the heat there on.
So nothing that would be shining, 'cause you kinda have somebody directly behind you and then across and over, right?
For what?
For, for, that's residential. 'Cause I know you, right across from it, you have a similar, or somebody has a similar lot. Is that yours too? And then like right behind you, you have residents and then like over and across, you have residents. And so none of, if you were to put lighting up, I guess, do we approve the lighting again, is that what? This bus, that goes, if you were easy to do, because I'm thinking if you're thinking of buses and miners, to me, that's where I know.
Buses.
Buses.
The bus goes to someplace and picks up miners. There's no miners, there's no one comes to this yard. At all. It's only the bus that parks there and they leave and they go someplace and pick up miners.
Okay.
So there, and there's no, there's no, there's no, nothing to do with people there except if a person drives a car in there, parks, walks over, safety checks the bus, gets in the bus and drives off, locks the gate. But it, but as far as lighting, if any lighting would be shining down as a, as a soft floret, as a soft light from the, uh, from the power pole, which NV Energy normally supplies for that. So there'd be no spotlight shining out or anything like that. And at this point, I don't believe there's a light on that.
Okay, any additional questions or questions for Betty? Alright, if not, I will, um, take a motion on this item.
I'll make a motion for SAPAPORT UH twenty four dash oh three to approve this conditional use, um, permit to utilize a portion of a one point two five acre parcel as construction, storage, rental property or, um, land or construction or based on the, um, that there should be no adverse effects on, to the lighting properties or the bathrooms of those properties.
That's what I'm.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Uh, those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. The motion passes.
You were killing it at the second.
Thank you.
Okay, so are we done?
You're good. Good choice. Good choice. You're good. Have a great day.
Thank you. Alright.
You have fun. You have fun.
See you later.
Alright, we are gonna move on to item D. This is UH dash two four dash zero four. It's a conditional use permit application submitted by Fred and Tammy Anderson slash Dan and Wyvet Yolan, Rolando to allow the future development of a commercial camping spot. At this time, the property will be utilized by family members and friends. Subject property is located at three five nine zero one Sheep Camp Road, Denio, Nevada, Assessor's Parcel Number zero two dash zero three zero one dash two five for discussion and possible action. Are any of the applicants here for this tonight?
No, they're actually out on the property.
Okay, they can't even probably call in. They probably don't have good cell service out there. Okay. So, um, any questions from the public related to this? We probably won't be able to answer it since the applicants aren't here, but any, any questions the board has?
They planning on putting a campsite out there?
Yeah, but they're, I mean, it sounds like initially for family and friends that they're gonna develop some, some campsites with the intention of maybe.
But not for the public?
Eventually, that's why he's doing this, 'cause he's thinking about if it's, you know, it's Fred Anderson drilling, so when he retires, you know, something to do. Um, but it would be for hunters, like, it's not gonna be anything fancy. He does, he's aware he has to put in like utilities and, uh, bathrooms and thinks that you would find it.
He's aware of that?
That was my question, is if they were gonna be putting in some amenities like that.
If he doesn't know of that, is he even what he wants to do? If he wanted to kinda get his foot in the door to get it approved and then work on it for the next year.
There's nothing out there now. You got buildings, anything out there?
Yeah, I think the picture shows.
You see that, but I didn't know if you.
It looks like right now it's pack in, pack out, no garbage or anything.
Yeah, and, and I'm sure that's how they'll probably keep it. There's a pond. It looks like there might be a couple buildings out there.
And that, is that pond, isn't that the hot springs itself? Isn't that a hot spring?
I don't know. They just recently bought it from, actually, I think, Rolando's grandparents, uncle, somebody had it. And they bought the property. They haven't owned it that long.
It is a big property. It looks like it's a hundred and forty acres, so.
Yeah.
They have like plenty of rooms.
How far off the main highway is this?
How about the exit? How about the exit?
I don't know, the map, personal map shows you where State Route one forty is and then where the parcel is. It's maybe half a mile, if you look at the, if you look at the sections, which each section is a mile.
So they're not gonna be doing a lot of development, basically, just?
No, it's just gonna be, I would almost say probably dry camping.
Uh, what county?
Dry, dry camping.
Oh, dry, I thought you said Dry County.
I wonder how close utilities even are to this, so it could be, yeah, it could be kind of hard to get stuff in there. All right, well, any, any questions or?
I mean, I think that is probably one of those things that it's nice to have, like, somebody thinking about being able to do it through somehow up top of it. So if it has the potential, the, and if it has hot springs around it, that would be great. Not that I, well, camping.
I'm not a camper.
I like camping right in the hotel.
You ain't gonna get your brother on the ground, I'm gonna tell you that right now.
I did have one question, you may know this, Betty, it did say that the property will have twelve hour access. What's his hour, like, what are their hours, like?
I don't, I think he was put that in there because it helps, I don't know that they help hours, I mean.
Yeah.
Unless maybe they, like, in their long-term plan, they have, like, if they have people to, like, check in.
During daylight or something like that.
Maybe they'd like check into the spot, getting situated, so it'll just be that, we'll call it today.
Okay, well, if there's no other discussion on this item, I will entertain a motion on this.
Um, I'll make a motion on Staffordport UH twenty-four dash oh four, that we approve this conditional use permit to utilize forty-one, or to utilize the forty-one point seven eight oh acre parcel as future development of commercial camping spots.
I'll second that motion, um, we'll go ahead and vote on this, those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, say nay? Okay, the motion passes. All right, last item, item E, this is UH dash two four dash zero five, a conditional use permit application submitted by Matt Moore with Complete Wireless Consulting, Inc. as agent for Verizon Wireless to allow placement of a hundred and fifty-five foot high lattice tower and associated ground equipment for an unmanned telecommunications facility. The subject property is located at two nine one zero zero Lone Tree Mine Road, a, um, a seventy by seventy portion of assessor, assessor's parcel number zero seven dash zero three eight one dash two one for discussion and possible action. Is the applicant here? If you'd like to come up and state your name for the record, tell us about your project.
I'm Matthew Moore, I am an agent for Verizon and also for this project, uh, company called Tower Co., so.
Good, can you give us some better services than you're able to leave?
Especially this area.
Let Betty know, send me some emails, I'll forward them right away. This is pretty straightforward, it's a hundred and fifty-five foot tall tower, Verizon's gonna take the top spot, but Tower Co.'s intention would be height of the tower and the size of the lease area, which is seventy by seventy, is to have, attract other people to co-locate there as well. It'll be accessed directly off of Lone Tree Mine Road, um, the parcel is in the M three zone, but it's currently developed as a mine, and so we're gonna go on the mine property itself, um, kind of in the front end in between some buildings and a parking lot that's there. And really, I think, yes, and really the meaning, I think, to the way is, I don't know if you guys got to look at it, but yeah, we're trying to fill this area here, and so when we put this tower here, it fills that gap along the freeway and, and just connects all the towers running along eighty there. And so that way, it enables, we call seamless handoff in between towers, so you're not dropping calls, you're not dropping, if you have your, your maps going or something like that, or you're talking to people, your data will be running, and it'll just go from Tower Co.
I think I get about, I'm trying to have a conversation on my way to Alco, I think I hit about three spots where I, three different areas where I have to, like.
Uh-huh, this will take care of one of them, definitely.
This will take care of one of them.
And if you want to point out the others, then give us some implications to let that, where we do it, so. And I, I can't remember, it's kind of so familiar, I think maybe a couple years ago I appeared remotely, because I swear I talked to you all, so familiar to you, I'm sitting over there like.
We, we brought quite a few, quite a few of these, um, communication towers and things come through the boards.
But it's nice that you're providing, because the last one that we did on ninety-five, um, the applicant did the same thing, was showing before and after coverage, and I think that helps.
Yeah, it's the, the best way to show why we're, we're listening to the person.
Oh, yeah, especially just for safety, you know, public, public safety, if someone has an accident and, you know, you can't get a hold of, you know, nine one one or something, so that's, that's, it's good.
Yeah, but the mine's happy to have their children, you know, doing their operations.
That, that's good, because last, most of the time when people come here and want these towers, we, with the residential areas, we gotta fight them for it, you know, so. We're happy it's here that you're putting it out there like that, I think it'd be great.
Are there any members of the public that would like to comment on this item? No? All right, um, seeing there are none, let's just bring this back to the board, any, any questions for Betty or further discussion we need to have on yours?
I think at this point, you guys have done several, and your competency is probably pretty straightforward as far as lighting and safety and all that stuff.
Yep, definitely, there'll be, we're not putting any lighting, like, on top of the Tower Co., the only lighting associated will be downward facing work lights within the interior of the lease space itself, in case there's an impact on.
And once it's put up, it just requires, like, maintenance, some people need to be there all the time.
Oh, no, no, I mean, it'll be, um, attention, I mean, because there's somebody along the freeway, you know, they'll do periodic, once every six weeks to two months or something, and then they're all monitored from outside, and so only if there's an emergency, and flights start watching them.
All right, so if there are any further questions, we're going ahead and have a motion on this item?
Come on, buddy, you wanna second it, buddy?
I, I, I'll make, I'll make the next one, I'll be making one, I promise.
I'll make a motion for Staffordport UH dash twenty-four dash oh five, uh, we recommend approval of this conditional use permit, the installation of the new hundred and fifty-five, uh, what's called lattice tower with associated ground equipment.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, um, we'll go ahead and vote, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, say nay? Okay, the ayes have it, the motion passes, thank you.
Congratulations.
So yours to get a hold of, we drop calls on eighty after this tower.
Okay, we're gonna move on to, um, our second, um, time of honor for public comment, again, all public comments, but it will be kept to three minutes. And if there's no public comment.
Thank you.
Which, that's not, I think, anyone is interested in making any further public comment at this point. So we will go ahead and adjourn to our July eleventh, twenty twenty-four regularly scheduled meeting at five thirty PM.
Same place? No, we'll be back up there.
Oh, did you go to, was that Waka?
Yeah. I mean, I should have thought that way, but.
I know, I forgot.